Okay, I text Tim to let him know we're ready.
Hey, we're live on YouTube now. We're out of it.
Okay, at this time, I'll declare the executive session is, is, we've come out of the executive session, so that part's closed. We do have some action to take. So Ms. Schoenfield, you have a, Commissioner Schoenfield, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the vacation advancement request for county employees presented in the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, motion carries. With that, that concludes our regular business for today, and we'll go into a budget workshop. Commissioners, does anybody need a 10-minute break? I do.
Yes.
10 minutes, please.
Yeah, I just. Yeah. And I sent you an invitation for it. I can only do a little bit while I'm trying to listen at the same time and do my minutes at the same time.
I take that.
And then have people watching. So, are, so.
I think the powers right now is that we've done our part and nothing is going on. So why are we still? I want, I really kind of.
Yes. I'm sorry.
I mean, this, these buildings. I was right.
I went and grabbed one, thank you. I ate it while they were in executive.
Okay, I see Commissioner Johnson had to excuse himself for this workshop. I'll call the workshop to order. I see four commissioners present. I see Ms. Bonnie, John DeLeon, Sally's aboard, so are we, Cindy, are we YouTubing yet?
We are on YouTube. It's just a continuation of the last meeting, so.
All right, I just saw the blue screen that said break on it, so that's all. There we go.
There you go.
All right, thank you, Tim. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody here, and of course, our workshop is with Ms. Monty Berry, who's our accountant here at the, at the college, at the county, and of course, we are beginning our budgeting process. And Bonnie, we'll look for a lead from you. Before we get started, is there any commissioner that would like to make a comment regarding budget? You know, I don't see Roy there yet. There's Roy, okay. Are you ready to go, Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, I was here, and I wanted to open my door to get a little air circulation.
All right, so I, does any commissioner wish to make a comment before we get going on our budget session today regarding the, I think we were received from you, Bonnie, pages of budget requests? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I hope you all received the email that I sent yesterday afternoon. I sent an updated handout for this workshop. So I hope you all receive that email and have the updated packet.
All righty. So we could go ahead and move forward? So, go ahead, Bonnie.
Okay, well, if you look at page one of the packet that I emailed yesterday, I updated the figures yesterday. We had a couple of payroll changes that needed to be updated, but the first page just shows a summary kind of of where we stand with the general fund as far as the requests go. As you can see, our revenues excluding the grant revenues are $42,567,950. The requests for expenditures for departments, component units, outside agencies, total $53,573,767. So that shortfall alone is $11,5,817. And just to note, I did remove $12 million. Jean had budgeted $12 million for the Lagoon Road combined facility. I took that out just because in prior discussions, the board had discussed using either or partially reserves, partially bonding for that. I did listen to the meeting this morning and found out that potentially the bonding won't happen, but I didn't want that to be shown as coming out of revenues because I don't think that that was the intention of the board. So I removed that $12 million. Grant revenue, $3,685,066. Grant expenditures, $4,026,922. The grant shortfall is $341,856. That's very typical. That's just the match portion. Total shortfall is $11,347,674. Are there any questions on that?
Bonnie, on the shortfall?
Yes.
Um. When I looked at Jean's budget, road and bridge?
Yes.
There's over $12 million in capital. Is that where some of the lagoon project money is in?
Yes, so he had $12 million budgeted for the, specifically for that Lagoon Road combined facility project. So that has come out of these summary figures. I have removed them from the summary figures.
So with that removal, we're still with the shortfall of almost $10, $12 million?
Yes, that is correct.
Bonnie, I have a question for you, if I may, Chairman.
Yes.
Um, in this shortfall, you did mention the projected carryover.
Yes.
Is that counted in revenue or is that not included in this calculation?
That is not included in revenue. So it's up to the commission to decide whether or not to use all of it, none of it, however much you want. But, but you are correct, that is not included in there. So for example, if you don't use any of it, the shortfall is $11,347,674. If you do choose to use it, it brings it down to about $5 million if you chose to use all of it, but that's the commission's decision.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to share with you, Lauren, because you weren't on the, I don't think you were part of the budget last year. Generally, the conversation that commissioners would have is, do revenues minus expenditures equal balance budget? Or revenues plus carryover equals a balanced budget? You know, or revenues plus carryover plus reserves equal a balanced budget? So those are the, those are the big questions and that type of thing, so.
Thank you.
All righty. So with that in mind, it's not good information, but thank you.
I think the cash carryover was pretty good information. It was a pretty high cash carryover.
Yeah, you, you know what, it started out not good, but then it kind of got better, but it's still, still not good from the standpoint of, you know, having possibly $5 million shortfall using the carryover, you know?
Yeah. No, but we, I think we were warned. I think we saw this coming. I hope all of you did. I did, so.
Without a doubt, and then when we look over, go ahead. So you, you continue. Does any other commissioners, this is a workshop, so jump in and ask questions whenever you want to, and Bonnie will answer them, and she'll even, can you write out a personal check, Bonnie?
It won't clear, I can't.
Okay, all right, we'll let that ride. Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Bonnie.
All right, page two, it just shows you some comparative information to the adjusted budget. So the second column on that is identical to the first page. So the first column is the adjusted budget for this year that we're in currently, so that would include all of the budget amendments that we have had. So as you can see, just in that first, first column, the fiscal year 2020 adjusted budget, the total shortfall was $4,485,114. And our cash carryover last year, if you remember, ended up being about 4.6. So we have budgeted to use most of that cash carryover from last year. I think initially it was under $4, $4 million. That was originally budgeted, but just through the budget amendments that we've had, that's gotten that up to almost 4.5 million. So again, the second column is just the request. It's identical to the first page, and then the third and fourth column, you can see the increased/decreased percent and the increased/decreased amount. So just some summary information, just to see kind of at a glance where we are. The next page, are there any questions on that before we move on?
No. Any questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
All right, and then the, the next page is, we have the departments, and we've got the component units, we've got the outside agencies, and then we also have the other funds. And I kind of just wanted to go through these one by one, because at the next two budget workshops, we are planning to meet with those departments, elected officials, component units, outside agencies, that you would like to meet with to discuss their budgets. So I just wanted to go through these one, one by one, and if you would just let me know, you can discuss your thoughts, and just let me know whether you want to meet with these or not. You're welcome to change anything if you want. If, if you see something that you want to change, just let me know. We can, it's a workshop, we can, we can change things at this point. Or if you want to see more detail, if you have questions, we can always bring up the request forms and look at those and answer any questions that you have. Or you're welcome to bring them in and speak to them about any questions you have. So, so let's start out with the commissioners. The.
Bring those jokers in.
It would be interesting, Bonnie, you, where, you say these are on the N drive or S drive?
Yes, they're on the N drive.
Under budget request?
Yes.
Okay, that, that gives a breakdown of what's in each of those payroll operating capitals?
Yes, it'll show each line item. For the departments, if you look on the N drive, it'll show each line item that will make up these summaries. Now, if any have been updated in the last two weeks, it might be a little bit off because the summary is most updated. I did those spreadsheets about a week or two, or, yeah, it was about two weeks ago. So most of them are accurate, but some of them have a few changes to them. But yeah, we can look at the detail if you would like to.
And for the simple guy like me, when you look at payroll, most of that comes out of, out of HR's office with all the benefits and that?
That's correct. They calculate the benefits based on the, what the employees have selected. So we have open enrollment in November, that they select coverage for the following year. So if someone changes their health insurance from family to single, that's going to make a big difference, or if someone drops their health insurance, it will make a big difference.
And then operating is basically what it takes to run the office?
Yeah.
Thing, fuel.
All your supplies, all your consumable, anything consumable. Your capital is going to be anything that has a useful life of longer than a year. So your big capital is going to be vehicles, things like that. Your smaller capital, you could have computers, printers. And if you do have questions on any of these capital items, the departments are required to go in and enter budget detail for that. So if you are questioning what something is in capital, we can always go in and look. Also included in the capital would be the lease payments, too. So if there was a lease in the past two years, say, the sheriff's department leased some vehicles, then they would include the lease payment also in their capital.
So if they're going to do a new leases, that would also show in the, in the capital?
Yes, that would be shown in the capital as well.
So as I try to approach this from the simple mind that I have, people is fixed, operating is very minimal part of the budget, and then capital, well, with people being about 75, 80% of our budget, that's huge. The next wide-range area, if we were to look at anything, would be capital, if we were trying to save some money versus looking at people and that type of thing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Like, my question was, is, is if we were really looking at budgets hard, capital would be the place to look, since, you know, we, we're pretty lean in a lot of our departments already and everything. So capital is where we would, would need to focus on if we're going to try to make up any ground on that $5, $6 million.
If you want to skip to page seven, it shows you a total of the departments of payroll, a total for payroll, a total for operating, a total for capital, and then a total for all the departments. So if you look at the, towards the bottom of that page, the total for all departments was $50,256,4593. So that does include the $12 million put in for the facility. That would be included in that capital line. So there is, in addition to that facility, there is $5 million in capital. Just FYI, in operating, there's $6,693,393, and then the payroll is $26,266,806. Just to give you an idea of the totals for all of the elected officials in department, basically the core county.
Okay, there we go, I found it.
Bonnie, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, into the commissioners' capital, there's $5,000 in there for furniture for my office, and I don't feel like it's appropriate with the current circumstances. Even though it's 5,000, it's not going to look a huge significant when we're looking at 5 million, but could you please remove that 5,000 from our budget?
Yes, I can. I will make a note of that.
Okay, so, all righty, commissioners, any questions before, Mr. Smith?
We'll get you next year, Lauren.
Perfect.
Okay, all right, Bonnie, go ahead and we can go through them.
Okay, so we're okay with removing 5,000 from the commissioners' budget. Are we good with that one then, after we remove the, remove the 5,000? Okay, engineering, we have a total of $476,514 is the request. That is a decrease of 4.34% or $21,641 decrease. So any questions? Would you like to meet with engineering, or are you ready to move on?
Do what, what? It's hard, it's hard to see it without what the, what the capital requests are from engineering.
Do you want me to let you know what the capital requests are?
Would you please?
Yeah. Okay, so they are requesting $2,500 for a new computer and $3,670 for AutoCAD Civil 3D software.
All righty, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Okay, so do you not want to meet with engineering?
Not at this point. I don't. Is anybody else?
No, but I, I don't think we need to meet with Jean specifically for engineering, but I think as we look down these lines, we'll just need to talk to Jean about, is he's a third of the organizational charge, so we'll probably want to have Jean there anyway, but go through his other requests in his multi-departments.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yeah, see, so one more time, Bonnie, I'll go ahead and go, facilities custodial?
Yes, facilities custodial request was $928,112. That's a decrease of 0.83%, a decrease of $7,770.
All righty. Yeah, we can look at, go ahead.
Are there any questions?
Okay.
Do you want to meet with facilities custodial?
Well, Jean, Jean's going to come in in general anyhow for, and that's part of his anyhow facility.
Okay.
I have another question. Bonnie, I'm sure that all of our department heads have already done this, but I think it would be good if we could give them a heads up that we're really going to be scrutinizing capital.
Okay.
Ask them all to take another look and ensure that everything that they're asking for is something they absolutely need this year.
Okay.
In that, you know, we're preparing for the future in this COVID crisis, along with the oil and gas and coal and everything else. And if it's not something they absolutely need, maybe we'd like a wishlist or something for upcoming strategic planning that we're going to be addressing.
Okay.
But I think that wouldn't be a bad thing to throw out to them, that we do want them to really look and hone in on those things.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Thank you, Lauren.
I will let them know.
Thank you. And I think that, and we haven't even gotten here yet, but I think we're going to probably want to do the same thing with the component agencies and the outside agencies that are requesting any more money this year than they got last year, and that they need to go back, and we're going to end up cutting them if they don't cut themselves.
Right.
So it would probably be smarter for them to re-review and, and look at where they can cut money out of their budgets to bring them down to what they received last year.
And Lauren, with that comment, when we get to those outside agencies, component units, we'll look at their 17, 18, 18, 19, and there is a benchmark of, of one of those years to hold them back to. So, and I think, just to throw it out there right now, when you take a look at the budget request that Bonnie sent out to us, and you go through them, the county departments, most part did a pretty good job. It's the outside groups that asked for more when Bonnie told them we were going to be short. And I think it's a good move, okay?
I did it for that year when we were at the Y. Like, I remember cutting it, and then I think there were only like four of us that actually cut the amount that we were requested to. And so I think that it's important that we go back to that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I just think we've got to be careful with that, especially with the airport and hospital, where they're going to be asking for more this year than last year for obvious reasons, to keep them afloat. So I, I, you know, asking Irene or Devon to say, hey, cut back to where you were last year before our next meeting, I don't, I don't think that's really the message we want to send them.
No, I agree.
Can't imagine that that's going to be possible. Can't imagine that that's going to be possible on their side.
No. You're exactly right, Jeff, and that's why uh it's more of a process of being strategic about it, don't get in a hurry. And there are going to be some of those that we know based on the fact that uh they're joint powers board. That the way that agreement's written. Um, we tried to fight a joint powers board a few years ago and lost as commissioners. So you're exactly right. So we can go through this, then I think it's another process when we get the component units. Then it's another process when it goes to outside agencies. You're exactly right. Okay, anybody else? Okay, Bonnie, go ahead.
Okay, the next one is facilities maintenance. Uh, the request is sixteen million, four hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, that's an increase of three hundred and five point six three percent. Um, and an increased dollar amount of twelve million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two. Uh, that twelve million is in there for the uh new facility. Are there any?
Okay, but that goes back to my original question. As much as it's in here right now, it's not in your numbers.
It's not in the summary figures, no.
It's not in the summary figures.
No, I subtracted twelve million out of those summary figures, but it is in this right here.
Thank you. I had to ask a question, even though I think I knew my answer. Thank you. Yeah, we'll talk to Gene.
Okay, are there any other questions on this one? Okay, uh, the next one, uh, facilities, parks and rec. Uh, the request is eight hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's a thirty point zero six percent increase. Uh, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollar increase.
That increase came mainly in capital?
Um, yes, the increase in capital, uh, the capital is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Gene will be in for that one.
Yeah, I definitely have want more information on that one.
Okay, do you want me to look at anything right now? Pull up any capital or just say yes and move on?
Let's just say yes or no and move on, and then we can do it on our own unless somebody disagrees.
No, I agree with that.
Okay.
All right, uh, fire marshal, uh, total request is nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred. That's a decrease of two point zero four percent, a decrease of nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Any questions? And would you like to meet with him?
What was this capital?
Capital is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
And I think that is a lease payment, isn't it?
I think at least part of it is, yeah. Do you want me to look?
Please.
Okay. Um, let's see, so the debt service is thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-four of that total. One hundred and twenty-three, one, one thirty-four. So it is a small portion. He also has um some other capitals too. Do you want me to read off what it is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Oh, and then part of that lease payment is also is a one lease pay, it's one payment on a new truck too. So he's got two new Motorola Mini Tarr, six five-channel pagers for a thousand dollars. Uh, commercial ice machine for forty-four hundred, a laptop with docking station and accessories for twenty-two hundred. Uh, um, Savin IMC two thousand office machine, I believe that's a copier. Um, for seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. A five hundred gallon fire package to go on Dodge uh fifty-five hundred for sixty-eight thousand, five hundred. And then the last payment on a pickup, the second payment, uh, so these last ones are just the lease payment amounts. The last payment on a pickup, second payment on the side by side, and a new Dodge fifty-five hundred makeup.
Let's have him come in and talk to us about capital.
Okay, sounds good. All right, the next one is uh fleet vehicle maintenance. The total uh request is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. That is a decrease of point two zero percent, a decrease of seven hundred and ninety dollars and forty-nine cents.
That that's under Gene, so we'll see him when he comes in.
Okay. All right, um, the next one is general county admin. Uh, the request is two hundred and ninety-four thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. That is an increase of twenty-four point zero three percent, increase of fifty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars.
Tell me what it is, general county.
Um, so this is, so the things that make up this is the audit goes into this, that's eighty-something thousand of that. Um, the shredding, I know the shredding has been a lot more expensive this year. Um, and then we've had a lot of legal this year in that. Um, for the tax payment disputes for bankrupt companies. Um, so, so that is why it's going up because of the legal and the shredding.
Who who oversees that?
Um, so Cindy is the one that does the budget for this um for general county admin. Uh, so she's, she's the one that oversees it and does the budget for it. Uh, Marty does the shredding part of it. Um, and then the legal goes in there because Rob told me it couldn't add his budget.
Okay, that's mine. Let's let's leave it. We can later come back to it much later if we need to.
Okay.
Alrighty.
All right, the next one is grants administration. Uh, the total request is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That is an increase of three point zero six percent, um, a total overall increase of four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
There's no reason to, no, there's no reason to have him come in.
Okay.
Unless somebody disagrees. Okay, very good.
Okay, uh, human resources, uh, the request is four hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The increase is five point two five percent, and uh the increased dollar amount is twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Say yes.
Go ahead, Roy.
I would think so, because anything that's a, you know, two, more than a couple percent in. Increase, I think we should have people defend, because that's what we're going to have to look at bringing down, was potentially a five to eleven million dollar budget.
Very good, then bring him in.
Bonnie, can you pull with that capital in in his budget?
Sure. Okay, so in the HR budget, uh, the total capital is six thousand, six hundred. There's twelve hundred for a mini tower for HR department conference room. A six hundred dollars for three, a total of three webcams. Eight hundred dollars for Logitech web webcam, and that's one, just one webcam. Um, two hundred dollars for two signature pads. Eighteen hundred for one laptop for the department and two thousand for a desktop and monitor.
I have a general question, and Bonnie, you may know this, I I don't know, um. Do we have a schedule for replacement of laptops and computers and printers and things like that?
Um, I believe Tim has a schedule for computer replacements. Um, that would be a better question for him to ask. I'm not sure that there is one for um printers or anything like that. But I believe that IT does have one for computers, but you would have to ask him to be sure, or I could ask him if you would like me to.
I can shoot him an email and ask.
He's gone. He's on, I think.
I'm here.
Forgot.
That's okay. Um, there's not an official schedule. Elected officials have traditionally kind of done things differently. But we do keep track of age of computers, and oftentimes we'll give recommendations as to when they should be replaced. Typically, we're trying to get on a rotation um of about four to five years. Uh, and but so we do consult with them on it, but there's not a written out replacement schedule.
Okay, thank you. That's probably going to be something that I'm going to bring up for uh strategic planning. Just because it is a significant amount of money that goes through um in capital investment for the county, and I think it does need to be tracked. Um, well, and I know once, once you, if you have an elected official there that's going to say, no, I'm not going to follow it, then that's fine. But I would love to look at that when we do strategic planning.
Okay.
I think on the HR, um, the big increase or a big increase looks to be dues and subscriptions. So be interesting to know if that's about fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars more than last year, so. What is it with Gary about that?
Yeah, have Gary come in.
And it is, um, it is a, like, the whole department as a whole, the operating is eighty-three thousand, that's the request. And if you remember, last year, um, fifty thousand was added for the salary study. So I'm not, I'm not sure, I guess I can look and see what that eighty-three thousand is, there's. Let's see, there's thirty thousand. Thirty thousand in professional services. Twenty-two thousand in dues and subscriptions. Yeah, I'm not sure why it went up so much. Because um I know fifty thousand was put in there last year, I believe it was fifty thousand. Um, for operating just specifically for the salary study. And if you look at the years before, it was thirty-six, thirteen, and thirteen, so I'm not, I'm not quite sure why it is eighty-three.
Okay, have him come in.
We'll find out.
Okay.
All right, the next one is risk management. Uh, this request is five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, this is an increase of seven point one four percent. Uh, the dollar amount increase is thirty-five thousand dollars. And that is, that is our insurance is what that is.
Like health insurance or liability?
No, not health insurance, li- liability insurance, insurance on the buildings.
Oh, I guess health would be next, or no, it isn't.
Health insurance is included in each of the department's uh payroll expenses.
Right, you're so right.
So what is the typical um increased amount that we build in to those health insurance expenses annually?
Um, it depends on the year. Last year, we put in twenty percent. Um, I'm not sure what Brenda put in this year. I believe it was, I believe it was less. Um, I did notice just in the health insurance expenditure overall and the health insurance fund. Um, the expenditure went up by eight percent, so I'm not sure if that's the number she plugged in. But I could ask her, I could ask Brenda what she put in for the increase in health insurance, if you would like me to.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, I will get back to you on that. Insurance increase. Okay, um, or I could probably just, well, no, that's not going to tell me. Um, yeah, I will get back to you on that. All right, um. The next one is employee benefits, operating, uh, the amount requested is fifteen thousand, eight hundred. Um, the increase percent is fourteen point four nine, and the increased dollar amount is two thousand dollars. And this, this would be for um expend expenditures for hiring new hires, um. That sort of thing.
Okay.
Fine with me.
Okay, um, the next one is IT. Uh, the request is one million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Uh, that's an increase of five point three eight percent. Uh, the dollar amount increase is ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
I would say bring Tim in.
Yeah.
Bring him in, okay.
I'm his liaison, I think it's all good. Good, Tim.
Well, it's gonna be, if we're on, I don't think we'll be on Zoom, but if we were, I'd say Tim's already here, so we're not asking him to do anything extraordinary.
Um, I tried Tim, sorry.
Okay, we'll bring him in. Uh, the next one is juvenile probation. Uh, request is five hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's an increase of one point one one percent, increase of five thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Quite a capital. Quite a capital improvement.
Yeah, I'd like to see what their capital is.
Capital, okay.
I remember, if I remember from talking to Karen, I think it's mostly computers, because they haven't had an upgrade in a significant amount of time.
Um, it looks like they have a new copy, print, fax, scan machine for eighty-three hundred, and there are two. Uh, laptops with docking stations.
Tell them to find funding for those who are grand. I would like to, I would like to talk to her about that.
Okay, all right. The next one is land use. Uh, the request is eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. This is an increase of twenty-six point five four percent. The dollar amount of the increase is one hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. A big part of that increase uh is going to be the the new employee that was hired um for economic development.
Yeah, you know, that's your big increase.
Yeah, that's what, well, total payroll increased a hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Uh, the other ones increased too. Operating went up twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty, and capital did go up twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. So.
You all should have a conversation about capital.
Okay. We will bring him in. All right, the next one is purchasing. Uh, this, the request is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. This is an increase of ten point two six percent. Uh, the dollar amount of the increase is forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Again, she's got leases in her capital.
She does. Let me take a look at it. Um, she has. So she has a scanner for five hundred dollars, miscellaneous tools, carts, truck nets for one thousand dollars. The pool vehicle last payment, uh, twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty, so that's the last payment of the lease on the pool vehicle. Again, that was twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. And then she has a a delivery truck. And the, it's thirty-four thousand dollars total, but she was budgeting eleven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars for the lease payment. On that new delivery truck. So that's what's, that's what makes up that twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Who's your liaison?
Jeff.
I didn't know we had a pool. Sure, Marty always has goods, good um excuses, what's the right word, reasons, or comments, he'll tell us good reasons. Well, probably. For bringing her in.
No, probably, yeah.
Okay, so bring Marty in? Okay.
We didn't bring Christina in because we give her more.
Okay, uh, are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay, next one is road and bridge.
That's part of Gene's, we'll bring him in.
Okay. Uh, next one is veteran services. Uh, the total request is two hundred and eighty-four thousand, four dollars. This is an increase of two point four four percent, uh, dollar increase, six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Now, Bonnie, isn't this uh shared with uh two or three other counties?
Yes.
They reverse us?
They do. We receive revenue from the other counties for veteran services. So this is just the expenditures, this doesn't have the revenues in it.
Okay.
I would be interested in seeing what those revenues are just to process for me.
Okay, I can bring them up.
Yeah, good call.
Sorry, guys, I'm asking a million questions.
No, you're fine. That's how we learn about it. We'll all learn something from it. Okay.
Okay. All right, so it looks like this fiscal year so far, um, we have collected ninety-five thousand, seven hundred dollars and forty-nine cents. And fiscal year nineteen, it was one hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents. And fiscal year eighteen, it was one hundred thousand. And fiscal year eighteen, it was one hundred thousand, seven hundred and ninety three dollars and twenty three cents. Do you want me to go back further?
No.
So roughly a hundred thousand the last couple of years. It was, it was higher than that. Um, if you go back farther. Let's see, eighteen. It, it was, it actually was quite a bit higher than that, um, the two previous years.
Okay. Alrighty, the point that, you know, we may budget it, but we do get revenue back on it like.
Yes, so I, I would imagine because they have been about the same the last couple of years, um, it would be about the same. It would be roughly that hundred thousand, although I think I did hear that they were kind of restructuring how they were going to be reimbursed. Reimbursed for that, so I could be wrong, but that's where, that's where it has been.
Okay.
Okay, shall we move on?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is the assessor. Uh, total request, nine hundred and seventy nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Increase of two point seven four percent, increased dollar amount of twenty six thousand, one hundred and forty three dollars.
That's mainly payroll.
Yes. It's twenty, the increase is twenty one thousand, one hundred and forty three dollars in payroll. Uh, the operating is up five thousand, but I know Dave usually puts in, um, some money and then right before we set the budget, if he doesn't have any disputes, he takes it out.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm personally, I'm okay with the assessor's office just because, you know.
It's pretty lean already.
Pretty lean, I think, and they've done a pretty good job in that office in the past. That's just me. I don't care, whatever the other commissioners want.
I think at this time, we're okay not to bring it in, but I would just say, you know, some of these small raises in, um, payroll are probably step raises that as we look at cutting, that might be something we have to look at. But at this point, I'm good because I'd like to move forward. And I think the one thing we need to note is next week, I think we get final presentation of, uh, the payroll chart and that could also affect some of these payroll. So that should be something we should be.
Very true.
Okay, so don't bring him in.
No.
Okay, next one is attorney, the county attorney. The total request is two million, seven hundred and seventy six thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars. That is a two point five percent increase. A total dollar amount increase is sixty seven thousand, six hundred and four dollars.
Again, salaries?
Ninety eight thousand increase in salaries.
Okay.
Capital is down by thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars. So there's only twelve thousand, nine hundred and seventy three dollars in capital.
I, I don't know if it's up to the other commissioners, but I don't know, you know, there's not much to pick up there. You know, that is, got.
I agree.
I agree.
So no?
No.
All right, county clerk. Uh, request is one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty four dollars. This is a decrease of eleven point one zero percent, a dollar increase of one hundred and fifty one thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars.
Woo hoo, Cindy, nice job.
Nice job.
Talk to all your friends.
You're gonna come for a gold star. Is that?
Very good, okay.
Okay, so now.
Teach everyone else how to cut eleven percent, will you, Cindy?
All right, the next one is financial management. Uh, total is one hundred and seventy five thousand, four hundred and thirty two dollars. This is an increase of four point eight eight percent. Uh, the dollar amount of increase is eight thousand, one hundred and fifty nine dollars.
Well, that's you.
That is me.
In payroll, who screwed up there? You can smile. Okay, I don't think so.
Okay.
I can feel the red coming through the screen, Bonnie.
Well, Gary, Bonnie, I'm gonna bail you out of this one. If we had to bring anybody in, it'd have to be Cindy because she, you work out of the clerk's office.
Yep.
So it would be you.
It would be.
Alrighty, thanks.
Okay, the next one is commissioner support. Uh, the total request is seventy five thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, this is an increase of two point six six percent. Uh, the dollar amount of the increase is one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah, it's all payroll. Okay, go on.
Okay.
Cindy doesn't come in for that one.
What was that?
Cindy doesn't have to come in for that one.
Okay, elections, uh, total request is five hundred and seventy nine thousand, one hundred and forty three dollars. This is an increase of sixty eight point seven five percent, an increase of two hundred and thirty five thousand, nine hundred and forty four dollars.
If Trump has his way, he's gonna call off elections this year.
Cindy, you gotta talk to yourself.
Yeah. But can we hold off or, we hold off for two more years? No, I, I think that, I don't know where you'd cut that one, to be honest with you, do you?
And, oh, it's really hard to hear in here with Tim next to me. Um, a lot of it is, we have to mail out a lot of things this year. And we will probably be able to get some of it back in revenue from the COVID cares act.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Okay, uh, the next one is clerk of district court. Uh, the department request is eight hundred and fifty four thousand, seventy two dollars. This is a decrease of one point five zero percent, a decrease of twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Again, she must, she and Cindy must have sat down and did budget together. Commissioners, you okay? Okay.
Okay, uh, the next one is the coroner. Uh, his request is two hundred and eighty seven thousand, four hundred and twenty five dollars. This is an increase of one point one nine percent. Uh, the total dollar amount of the increase is three thousand, three hundred and eighty seven dollars.
Bonnie, what was his actuals on his operating so far?
So far this year?
Yeah.
Um, let's see, the year-to-date actuals are thirty three thousand, five hundred and ninety eight dollars and twenty four cents. That's as of when I ran this report, which would have been last, early last week.
I'm sorry I asked you. It's in the column to the left.
Yeah, it's on the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year-to-date actuals.
Yeah, but okay, then the column next to it shows what they were at the end of the year and that type of thing, so.
Yeah, so the first two columns are actual numbers for the previous years. And then the third column is a year-to-date actual, so obviously that's gonna be lower because the year's not over yet. And then the, the next column is the adjusted budget.
I had a scene.
His numbers are quite a bit down this year.
Yeah, I had a senior, I had a senior moment, I'm sorry.
All right, so are we good with that? Do you want me to move on?
I, you know what, if, if there's anything left from year to year, it goes into carryover, so.
It does, that's correct.
Alrighty.
The next one is sheriff. Uh, total request is six million, twenty six thousand, eight hundred dollars and eighty four cents. It's an increase of seven point four two percent, increased dollar amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty six dollars and twenty four cents.
Capital, capital went up considerably. Let's have him come in and talk to us.
Okay.
For that one.
Okay.
As well, yeah, I'd call him, he'll come in for that. He'll also talk to us about the detention capital as well and that.
Okay, so detention, you want me to say yes to that one too?
You guys, you commissioners, okay with that? Okay.
Okay, uh, the next one is emergency management. Uh, the department request is one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and ninety nine dollars and seventy five cents. An increase of thirty three point two two percent. Uh, the dollar amount of the increase is twenty nine thousand, twenty six dollars and seventy five cents.
Bonnie, I.
That's also under the sheriff.
That's also, yeah, thank you. I was just gonna ask that question. He'll talk to us about that one as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then animal control, the next one, this is also under the sheriff. It's, the request is one hundred and sixty seven thousand, four hundred and thirty three dollars and ninety two cents. The percentage increase is one point four two percent. Uh, the dollar amount of the increase is two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah.
And that's all on payroll.
All on payroll, yeah, thanks. Good catch, Lauren, thanks. If anybody has any questions about that, we can talk to the sheriff too when he comes. I don't see anything there.
Okay, the next one is the treasurer. Uh, the request is nine hundred and seventy one thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars. This is an increase of point four four percent. Uh, dollar amount of the increase is four thousand, two hundred and twenty seven dollars.
We don't need to see him.
Okay.
All payroll.
Okay.
If Gary's numbers are accurate, then we're okay.
What was that?
If Gary's numbers are accurate, then we're okay.
I'm sure they will be changing as time goes on. They usually do.
Thank you, right, Bonnie. Thank you. Okay, go on.
All right, that is all of the departments. Um, so that very last section right there is just a total amount. So, um, we will just bring in the ones that you had requested to see. So moving on to page eight, the next page is the component units. So we'll start with the events complex. The events complex request is three million, four hundred and eighty nine thousand, nine hundred and ten, twenty five point two four percent increase. A dollar increase of seven hundred and three thousand, three hundred and three dollars.
Need to see him.
Pardon?
I think we should bring him in.
Well, and I'd like to point out to you, you know, the amount in two seventeen, two eighteen, that was the year that he requested that for over three years. He would get approximately nine hundred to one million plus some change each year to do capital projects. So that's why you see it jump up to two point eight. And then, um, last year, um, I think that, Bonnie, you correct me if I'm wrong, but twenty nineteen, twenty, oh, adjusted, yeah. The adjusted, we stuck that nine hundred thousand in again, and that's where his actuals are right now. So, you know, very easily, when you look at his request, he is not quite, he's about one point five, one point six million dollars over where he was in seventeen, eighteen, when we.
Being a part of it.
What, Ryan?
And being a part of that board meeting, the reason for the request was increasing the mill due to the concerns of COVID and not bringing in income, so.
Well, and.
With that increase, I still think that level of increase, we have to have a discussion.
Well, I, I'm still looking at two seventeen, two eighteen budget and whether or not, uh, we're gonna put in that extra nine hundred for maintenance like we have in the past. It's a unique year versus the last two years. So, yeah, they've got to come, the point is, they gotta come in.
Okay.
They, we, we need to break down. I want, I also, I don't know how the other commissioners feel. Maybe this isn't the, I think at some point in time, you know, no commissioner Johnson isn't here right now, and a good thing it's a workshop, but at some point in time, I think we have to consider looking at the events complex and tell them we want a, over a certain period of time, a budget that is self-sufficient within so many years.
I agree.
So, but, um, we can have that conversation when they come in, but I'm, I'm ready for it. And I don't, I hope, and if you aren't, I'm only one vote when it comes to it, so feel free. Thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, the next one is the library. The request is three million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety eight dollars. This is a two point two percent increase. A dollar amount increase is sixty six thousand, nine hundred and ninety eight dollars.
They'll have to come in.
Okay, yes.
We're gonna break down.
Okay.
Unless, unless their liaison disagrees.
No, I, I, um, I think they should come in because it's kind of the candle we're holding everyone to it. There's an increase to come in. Assistance. I do know that I'm, I have talked to Director Grubin and, uh, the, the two percent really was reflective to what was, they lost last year. Um, more specifically, there's the increase in the, the, um, the, um, the insurers that they, we. But with that being said, I do think that, um, they should come in. I know Director Grub is willing to go with any direction we send him, so.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, he's a player, always has been, but it still doesn't hurt to come in and take a look at things. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the museum. The request is three hundred and ninety seven thousand, five hundred and seventy eight dollars. This is a thirteen point three zero percent increase. Dollar amount of increase is forty six thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars.
Sure, liaison agree they ought to come in?
Um, so the reason that they are asking for the increase is because they asked for less money last year because they had enough money in reserves to cover some rental that typically, I believe the county had covered. However, I agree that they need to come in, um, because again, we're holding that blanket statement over all of them. And I actually would like to propose with our component units and our outside agencies that anybody that has an increase, we request to see anyway, um, overall. And I don't even know if we need to completely go through each of them because I think we're just gonna say the same thing. But I think any of those component units, um, or outside agencies that have any sort of increase, we are absolutely going to need to see this year.
Well, and I'd like, you brought something else up and I meant to do it before we started, is I also believe, I know Bonnie, you have a good handle on why people need to have carryovers primarily. Because in some cases, days cash on hand gets them until they get their tax money or get money, whatever.
That's correct. So the component units, with the exception of the Board of Health, receive a, receive a portion of our twelve mills. So they don't get revenue, they don't get very much revenue in until November. From the start of the fiscal year until, until we get the big tax payments in November, they don't get a lot of revenue. So, uh, the events complex, the library, the museum, um, Southwest Counseling has a lot of its own revenue, um, but, but the portion that they get from us, um, the hospital, hospital maintenance, um, that, that money, the big dollars, doesn't come in until November. So it's, it's really, it's really gonna be those component units that don't have other sources of revenue. So for example, the library has very little other revenue besides the revenue that they get from, from the mill levy. The museum has very little revenue, um, other than the revenue they get from the mill levy. Um, so those two, uh, have to have at least five months of cash on hand. Um, just to make it, to pay payroll, to pay their operating costs.
Okay, thank you. And those are conversations we can have when they, when they come in. Okay?
Yes. All right, the next one is Southwest Counseling. Uh, the request is seven hundred and sixty two thousand, eight hundred and forty one dollars. This is an increase of three point three five percent. The dollar amount of the increase is twenty four thousand, seven hundred and thirty two dollars.
Is that, you know, that dollar figure sticks out from increase of, uh, health insurance. What are your recollection, Ryan, or Jeff, whoever's there?
Um, just reading their request, it says it's, uh, due to the increases in insurance premiums. That is why they're, um, requesting increase this year.
Thank you.
Over last year.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's just a question whether we need him to come in or not for that amount, you know, they're, they're also struggling too. It might not be an opportunity to have a conversation to know what, what their plans are.
Well, I think we asked the library to come in at two point two percent increase, so I mean, it's more than what the library is asking. I think we just need to be consistent with it.
Good enough, bring him in.
Sorry.
No, don't apologize. I mean, we, we all wanna know what we're doing, you know, I think we're doing a great job. But if we really wanna get into knowing what it is we're responsible for and being held, you know, as oversight of finances, we need to talk with them. So feel very comfortable. That's what it's about.
Okay, we will bring them in. Uh, the next one is Memorial Hospital Maintenance. Uh, the request is, uh, one million, four. Uh, the request is, uh, one million four hundred and forty eight thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. This is a decrease of twelve point two five percent. Dollar amount of the decrease is two hundred and two thousand two hundred and forty two dollars.
So if I read that, they're asking for less money?
They are asking for less money. However, the hospital has two parts to their request. Um, but overall, they are asking for less. The other part to their request is on page ten, we'll get to that, but it's title twenty five Memorial Hospital. And it looks like that increase only went up ten thousand four, nine hundred and forty dollars. So it does look like overall they're asking for quite a bit less.
When we get to that title twenty five, I'll share what's going on, a little bit of what's going on there. I don't, I don't, you know, I anticipate if the hospital needs money, doesn't matter what time of year it's going to be, they'll come in because they are Sweetwater County. And, uh, they are our, one of our motherships. Um, if not the mothership, so, uh, um, I don't see any reason for them to come in. Does anybody else? Uh, Jeff, you're their liaison.
Not for the maintenance fund, no.
Okay, very good.
Okay. All right, the next one is Board of Health. Their request is six hundred and seventy four thousand sixty eight dollars. Uh, this is a three point five eight percent decrease, a total decrease of twenty five thousand.
Yeah. I don't think they need to come in.
Okay.
Anybody else disagree? Or everybody agreed they don't need to come in? Okay.
Great.
Shake your head.
Moving on, the next page, we get into our outside agencies. Uh, so we'll start with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Uh, the request is twelve thousand dollars. This is the same as it was last year, so zero percent, zero dollar change.
Did we give them money last year?
Yes, we gave them twelve thousand dollars. I, I believe we need to see them.
Huh?
I don't think we need to see them.
Well, my question is, is it's a new, it's a new dollar amount, a new agency that I don't know if we funded them in the past prior to this last year.
We have not funded them through the general fund in the past. I believe we've had some pass-through grants to them. If I remember correctly, but we've never funded them directly through the general fund in the past ten years until last year.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think we do, um, working with Christina through one of the grants, Big Brothers and Big Sisters may get it, be getting some money.
Big Brothers, Big Sisters was under the YWCA while I was there.
Okay.
So they actually received money under the YWCA. So when I did my strategic planning, um, we reviewed Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and we actually moved it from underneath the YWCA because it didn't fit with the full mission and it wasn't growing. So we partnered it with Greater Wyoming, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and then they moved out on their own. The first year they requested funds, um, because it was partway through the year, it wasn't grounded through the county. But since then, I believe there's been two years, yeah, there's been two years that they've received the twelve thousand dollars from the county. So that's kind of the backstory on it.
We picked, yeah, okay, we picked it up after it moved out of, okay, very good, thank you. So there's no increase? Do we want to?
I still think we should have them come, you know, as an outside agency, I still think we should have them come justify it. Because, I mean, even with the, um, cash carryover, we're still looking at over five million dollars and
Oh, I know.
And I really think those outside agencies are what really have to have the greatest scope on.
Well, and, and on top of that, it's, uh, when you take a look at statutes, what we are, are expected to fund through statute. Everything else, you know, we've got to take care of Core County first. And those, uh, then second of all, we haven't even looked at them is our joint boards. Um, joint power boards that have, uh, agreements that they could submit any amount of money and, and we have to fund them, we can't fight it. So, um, I think we have to take into consideration that if there's any arenas where we can pick up money that isn't impacted by statute, it's outside agencies. They're not, we don't have to fund them is my point. So do we want to bring them all in or not? As we move forward.
You know, it would make for a long day, but I think to be efficient, we'd have to consider it.
Well, let's go, okay, let's go ahead and move, go through the list with the idea that they may all be called in, Bonnie.
Okay, so you, you don't want to tell me right now? We'll go through the whole thing first.
Yeah, well, let's take each one of them. I think, I think Big Brother and Big Sisters need to come in. Anywhere outside, you know, where they end up.
Okay, uh, the next one is Boys and Girls Club. Their request is sixty thousand. This is a twenty three point four six percent increase, an increase of eleven thousand four hundred.
They got to come in.
Okay. Uh, Castle Rock Hospital District. So I, the, okay, their request is three hundred and forty eight thousand. This is a fifteen point six one percent increase, a dollar amount of forty seven thousand, and this is for the ambulance service.
Well, and, and, uh, that's under the contract that, and we're presently gone out with a, uh, request for interest as well as getting ready in our RFP, I believe. Um, so this, this here, this is what it's going to cost us for the year to keep them under the present, uh, contract. So I think as we move forward, we all have to leave it there for now. Um, but the increase is what concerns me, so they need to come in.
Okay. All right, the next one is Klein, Wyoming. Their request is five thousand dollars. Uh, they didn't have any requests before that, so it's a five thousand dollar request.
The, uh, request there, yeah, they've, they've, there's been requests in the past and the commission has cut it because they get money through the TANF.
Yes.
I think they request through here primarily if, because if the TANF gets cut out from under them, at least this money would be a match.
Yes.
So, you know, it would be a new request. Um, I think we have TANF coming up here shortly and that type of thing, um. I don't think Klein would have to come in because my, as much as I'd like this, this will be a five thousand matched with five thousand if they get it, which would be benefit their organization. But my question is, is this the year we want to start this or not? That would be a call for commissioners. So.
I'm okay with that right now.
I'm going to have some more research before I'm ready. I don't
Well, we can, we can leave it there and pull it off later, Lauren.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And Jeff, we can leave it there and if it stays, it stays, so. Um, I don't know if you want, I don't think you need to bring Brittany in right now. You can make some phone calls and do some checking.
Okay, so you don't want to meet with her?
Uh, you guys want to meet with her, Roy?
No, I think this is a good plan.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is Family Resources. The request is sixty thousand. That's a three point four five percent increase, a two thousand dollar increase.
Well, that stays with the aspect of everybody coming in and that increase. Back, back up one. What happened to Family Planning?
They did not submit a request.
Okay. Thank you.
So meet with Family Resources.
What do you guys think? Yeah, okay.
Yes, okay. The next one is Food Bank. Uh, the request is twenty thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars. That's a five point zero four percent increase, a one thousand dollar increase. And just to refresh your memory, uh, this is for the health insurance for the director.
Right, the question that comes into mind is, do we continue to pay the health insurance at the level it is for the director or not? Because that's all the money we give them is just for health insurance. And that was started a long time ago. Mister, what's your pleasure?
Unless we're voting all together, I don't need to visit with them about a one thousand dollar increase.
No, and well, especially with its insurance. Okay.
Okay, so no?
No.
You don't want to meet with her? Next one is Hospice. Uh, the request is eighty thousand. It's a six point six seven percent increase, a five thousand dollar increase.
Bring him in.
Huh, bring him in, yeah.
Okay. The next one is VIRS. The request is one hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars. The five percent decrease, the dollar amount of the decrease is five thousand five hundred.
I'm good. Go ahead, what, Jeff?
I said I'm good.
Remind me, V R, V I R S again?
It's the rest of the folks.
Ah, yeah, okay, thank you. All right.
Are we okay with them? You don't want to meet with them?
No.
Okay. Uh, the next one is Youth Home. The request is one hundred and sixty two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars. Zero percent increase, zero dollar increase.
Bonnie, do you recall why when I, why is it, all those are actuals, sorry. It'll be at the same, they've been held the same since seventeen eighteen, haven't they?
Yes, they have.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to meet with them?
You guys want to meet with them? Anybody?
No, all right, let's a no. Uh, why do we see A, the request is two hundred and ninety five thousand two hundred and ninety six dollars. This is a zero percent increase, a zero dollar increase. Would you like to meet with YWCA?
Well, let me think, let me throw this out there for a second. When we sent your budget request out, even to these agencies, you told them we'd be at least two million dollars short, right?
I told them, I think I, I believe I did tell them two, two million and that equates to about a five percent decrease.
It looks like some of them abided by it, but some didn't. Even, even ones that come in at the same amount of money, they didn't do any cutting. Let me just look for a second. We got Boys and Girls Club coming in, we got Castle Rock coming in. Big Brothers and Big Sisters not coming in. They didn't read the memo to cut. Got a few others. Food Bank, it's benefits, it's tough to call that one.
I don't know though. I mean, I know that the Food Bank has received significant donations way above and beyond this thousand dollars. And I know it's a thousand dollars, but
Can they use that money, Lauren, though, their donations to offset, uh, wages and stuff, you know?
I don't believe there are any stipulations, but that's something we could follow up around. I mean, I think they received like twenty five thousand dollars in donations from the community, which I'm sure a lot of it's going out as well, but I don't know, it's hard.
It is. Well, my only question is, is we sent them out and told them we were going to be short money, you know, to about two million, which is five percent, now it comes forward. And if we decide to use our carryover, we're still, still nearly percent short in our budget and we didn't see those types of cuts. And then we're going to come in and look at capital for, for our, uh, core government and stuff like that, which I don't have any problem looking at it, but I struggle a little bit of, uh, outside agencies not, uh, whether they can or they can, I don't know that piece or not, but, uh, you know, stepping up to the plate for some of them. That's my struggle. You know, take a look at Golden Hour down there, Lauren, they, they did a five percent cut, they read the memo.
They did, so they also had some funds as well that's helping them cover some stuff, so.
But I mean, at least for us.
Oh, it's absolutely, yeah.
For us, Conservation District did. Uh, so did the Extension, well, I don't know, yeah, they did. She went, I talked to her personally on the phone and she cut some stuff. But, you know, there's, there's some that, there's some that played ball, rest of them aren't. And I think the ones that didn't need to come in and tell us why they don't think they should.
I agree.
That's just my thoughts, I'm only one. Roy, what do you think?
I agree.
Jeff, you're contemplating, you can't be marinating, Roy's done all that.
I'm the marinator.
I know it.
I'm ruminating on, uh, I'm still stuck on the ambulance stuff, but yeah, you guys do, do what we want there. Do what you want. I'm following, I'm on a different train of thought.
Okay, that's okay, you stay there. And, uh, so as I look at this, Bonnie, and based on the request that's sent out, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Girls Club, uh, ambulance is coming in anyhow. Um, and, uh, Family Pi- Pining, don't worry about Family, Family Resources, you know, didn't do it, but they added three. Food Bank, they need to come in.
You do want food banks to come in?
Well, you know what, they had a five percent increase, yeah, you know, and that's benefits, but I think the question has to be asked is, you know what, can you get your benefits anyplace else or anything like that? I don't know. What do you, as other commissioners, think about Food Bank?
Well, and I, I, I see the value in every component, all these outside agencies, I mean, I help care agency on the outside and understand the value of all of them. But I also know that as much as I want to help all the agencies that we can, what's our fiscal responsibility? And, and, and I think we have to look at things tightly this year because, I mean, we, we're kind of, um, we've talked about it multiple times, but the deficit we're facing is pretty large. And I, and my belief is that next year isn't going to be any better.
Well, yeah, they get, and I agree. And that's my agreement anyhow. Lauren, what do you think?
I agree with Roy. I think that we really, in looking at this, there has to be some place. I mean, unless we're talking about one person's salary and everything else is paid by somebody else's grants and they're not taking a, a salary, they're not getting a raise, things like that, that we really need, we need them to come in and explain why they didn't make a cut, why, you know, they're asking for additional money when we're all struggling.
Yeah.
And our fiduciary responsibility first and foremost is the county.
Yeah, and, and, you know, years ago, there'd have been, if we were six, Bonnie knows this, if we were six million dollars short and if it equated eight or 10 percent, there was a 10% straight across the board to everything. And there were budgets, Bonnie, you know as well as I do, the money wasn't there.
Yeah.
To do that too. So I, I'm just, uh, think we need to do this a little differently. I, I'm going to look through it and I would say, uh, VRS is probably, it's at five percent, they did what they asked. If we take a look at our total figures and have to have some more come in, we can. Um, I think the, uh, Youth Home needs to come in, they didn't do anything. YWCA didn't do anything. I think Golden Hour did just what we asked them to do. Uh, Young and Heart, they have an increase, uh, all along, you know? And so they need to come in. Conservation District did what we asked them. Co-op Extension went deeper. Um, you could see that we moved Eden Valley, that's to keep their, uh, community center to help pay electricity and stuff on it, because we, um, county, you know, county people taxes built them a nice building. They just didn't figure in that they wouldn't be able to afford to pay the utilities on it, so we're helping with that. But again, too, Bonnie, look at their their year, their actuals to date are thirty two five?
Yes. So the component units, they, the money just comes out of the general fund, it's not a portion of the mill levy like the component units are. So they can at any time request So they can at any time request the amount of their allocation, and once they have requested the total amount, then they can't request anymore. So you have some of the outside agencies making monthly requests, they just divide it by twelve and, and have twelve requests, some of them quarterly, some of them just one request.
So.
So they have already taken all their money, um, so they won't be getting any more for the rest of the fiscal year.
So we, so realistically, if I were a good businessman, I'd request my money, total amount, and keep requesting it, not share if I have any carryover. Because we don't look.
That's, that's generally what the outside agencies do, they usually request all of it. And then there's no carryover, that's why I don't take the outside agencies into consideration when I'm calculating the cash carryover, because usually they do expend all of it.
Okay, well, and we've, we've got that on the reports, don't we, if they have any cash carryover?
Yes, I mean, I could look it up.
Alrighty, yeah, so, you know, yeah, and that's a seven percent increase for, uh, Eden Valley, so they need to come in, and why didn't they reduce it down to the five, you know? Or more? I'll just, I'll just go through these. Bonnie, I know you are, so let's start with Flaming Gorge again, I want just recaptured the ones we already did.
Okay, so Flaming Gorge Days, their request is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, zero percent increase, zero dollar increase, so it's the same as last year. Would you like to meet with Flaming Gorge Days?
Now, what, what happened? They didn't have flaming, they're not having Flaming Gorge this year in June.
They are not, they canceled it.
So what, did they get their money from us for this year's Flaming Gorge?
Uh, year-to-date actuals, yes, they have received, uh, money in this fiscal year, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Okay, so my question would be, is if you got the money already, you're not having Flaming Gorge Days. The county should get a reprieve for a year, because you already got your money.
I would have, I would imagine, Doc, I would imagine, Doc, that there's some expenses associated with not putting it on. Sure. But, uh, but, yeah, not twelve thou- you know, not twelve thousand, so maybe, yeah, why isn't it last, that's the good question.
We're talking Flaming Gorge at twenty-eight hundred. But the same thing picks up on Red Desert, you're right, Jeff.
Yeah. Because they're not. Desert, last I heard, that we can't.
It had been canceled.
No, it hasn't been, okay.
No, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, has it been canceled?
No, last, last I heard, it had not been canceled, they shortened it from three to two days. But, uh, they had not canceled yet, they're still planning on it in July.
Okay. Alrighty, so go, go ahead and, I'd go down the list, those are, you know, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on Flaming Gorge or Red Desert. You can.
Do you want to bring them in?
Yeah, they can come and talk to us and tell us where they're at, we give them money, it's the only time we get a report from them, for the most part.
So you would like to meet with both of them, Flaming Gorge Days and Red Desert Roundup?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, the next one is Star, the request is one hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars, it's a zero percent increase, zero dollar increase. Would you like to meet with Star?
Well, like, it kind of goes in line with all the others, you know, they all read the mem- some read it and some didn't. Roy, what's your thought, you're the laser.
I'd say, bring it in.
Okay.
Okay, we'll bring in Star.
I have to get off, I have another meeting in two minutes, and then I'm going to try to hop on that other meeting that, um, Danny or Moxie has.
Three o'clock, yeah, that's, we'll try and get done here in the next ten minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, you're fine.
Okay, we'll try to move through these quickly. Uh, Treatment Court request is nine thousand, a twenty-eight point five seven percent increase, two thousand dollar increase, would you like to meet with Treatment Court?
What's that for?
It's, um, Treatment Court.
The diversion court, drug court? So if you go to, you go there, they set rules instead of jail time, you follow the rules, you don't have to go to jail.
See that, that isn't part of a grant, is it?
Part of what?
Grant or anything?
Oh, not that I know of, no.
It might not be bad to have an update and why they need to increase.
Okay, so yes, uh, Carbon County Fire District, this is an agreement that we have with them, it's just twelve thousand dollars a year, so that is no one to meet with, it's just an agreement that we need to pay. Guardian Advitem, um, this is just what we have to pay, also, there's no request for it. I put in that amount, it was budgeted a lot, it's been budgeted really high the last couple of years. And I reduced it down to a more reasonable amount this year, because it was, um, over budgeted in the past. We've seen, um, lower actuals in the past, so I reduced this down to one fifty. If you would like, we could reduce it even more. Um, but this is just a number that I plugged in there based on historical information, there's no reason for it.
I think Guardian Ad Lighton was part of the interim last summer and part of legislature, and it's coming up again this summer to be studied. And it's more along the line to get the state to pay for more of it than what they presently are, so it's one of those that you can put an amount in, and if there has to be a, a budget amendment later in the year, there can be, but I would.
Yeah, we can reduce it more if you want.
Well, I think right now, leave it, because it's, um, I think you're exactly right, you're seeing it. Uh, see where the actuals end up, if they're around the two hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty, if we can take another twenty out of it, we will later, okay?
Okay. Alright, so we'll leave it as is then. Uh, Public Defender, uh, the budget is one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, it's the same as last year, this is also not a request. This is just something that we have to pay.
Yeah, comes out of state level.
Yeah. And then the next one is Chamber of Commerce, that one, obviously no request. Uh, the next one is, uh, the Green River, or Rock Springs, Green University, Sweetwater County, um, com- Communications Joint Powers Board, the request is seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Uh, that's a decrease of twenty point seven six percent, a decrease of two hundred and six thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, and that's, I knew that was coming, that they were going to reduce it, because we paid some money earlier this year to help with some things, so they reduced the budget. Again, this is a joint powers board that, uh, the board requests some money. Uh, basically, we're expected to pay part of it, we're in a partnership on percentages with Green River and Rock Springs, and this is the Sweetwater County portion. Uh, Rock Springs and Green River have another part of it that's even more, so that's quite a reduction. Uh, we got a director that wants to play nice, so I think it's a good move, we'll see what else shakes out of it.
Okay, so you don't, do you want to meet with them or not?
I, I don't think we need to, if the other commissioners, unless they want to.
Do any of you want to meet with?
Joint Powers Board, Communications?
No.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is the Airport, uh, the request is eight hundred and seventy thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, that's a forty-eight point three-three percent increase. Two hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and forty-dollar seventeen cent increase. Would you like to meet with the Airport?
I understand why they're requesting more, but I do think we need to have a discussion.
Yeah, just an update, he'll come in and give us an update, don't you think, Jeff?
Yeah, I, yeah, there's going to need to be more money there, but he can come and explain why.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so we'll meet with him. Skywas Airlines, I don't have an updated figure on that, so I just have the same amount as last year, I'll need to talk to Devon about that, see if I can get an updated figure. Um, but again, that's just a number that I put in and I get from Devon.
Yeah. He'll update us when he comes in, Bonnie.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then, um, the next one is, uh, Sweetwater Medics. So, um, I, I just put in the same amount as last year, I don't know, they don't do a, a request, because we've had a, a multiple-year contract with them in the past, and I believe the contract we have with them currently expires at the end of the fiscal year, so at the end of June, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't have any updated information on what that's going to be next year. So I have, I have it the same as what it was last year.
It'll, it'll be the same way as Sweetwater Medics, you know, I think as we work through the, um, R F P and that type of thing, we'll have a better idea where that's at, but in the meantime, I think we need to leave it until we know what we're going to do. Um, as far as the R F P, we can make some adjustments.
Okay.
As we get, move forward, reduce or whatever.
Okay, and then the next one is Title Twenty-Five, so the first line is Memorial Hospital, so that's the Title Twenty-Five that the hospital has requested, so it's two hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, which is a four point one seven percent increase. Or a ten thousand nine hundred and forty-dollar increase. The second line on there is just the portion that the county pays that doesn't go to the hospital. And the budget on that one is ten thousand, and it's the same as it was the year before, ten thousand.
Yeah, I think the Title Twenty-Five will be part of interim study this, uh, starting this month with, uh, committees, so, um, they're looking at the costs and seeing what they can do about it, so I don't think it'll increase unless the hospital, um, cost will increase, do you, Jeff?
No, Bonnie, I'm, I'm curious why the year-to-date's only seven fifty-four, do they submit generally at the end of the, or, um, seems as though that's.
So, it might just be down this year, so the seven hundred and fifty-four is not the hospital portion. That's just other, other Title Twenty-Five expenses. So it's possible that it might just be really low this year. The previous years were six thousand two hundred and forty-five and four thousand sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. It generally covers like transport costs, those kinds of costs. So maybe they just didn't, maybe there, we haven't been built for them, or maybe they, we just don't have very many this year.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, John.
Yes, John.
Uh, so I was just, um, with your permission, I, I've got another meeting to attend, I, as far as on the, um, the involuntary costs, I know that, um, those have been down, uh, re- especially recently with the, uh, COVID circumstances. There's been, uh, particularly, particular scrutiny, uh, on those and, and every attempt to to try to handle those, um, uh, externally as much as possible. So there's, there's been an attempt at, uh, particular scrutiny. I don't know if that's the, the, the reason for it being down, but I, I can tell you that, uh, we do on-call, and I know during during my, uh, periods, um, I, we didn't, we didn't even have one for a couple-week period, which is a little rare, so I, I think it's, it's, uh, that's at least part of the answer there.
Alright, thank you, John.
Thank you, and with your permission, I'll, uh, sign off.
You're fine, thank you, thanks for being here today.
Dropping like flies.
I know it, so, okay, go ahead, Bonnie.
Okay, um, it's just a note from Cindy's, oh, it just went away. Cindy just left a note on the screen, just explaining what that was. Um, she said, we pay attorneys in other hospitals, when one of our county residents has issues outside of Sweetwater County, so.
We'll, we'll just leave it there, we can adjust it later.
Okay. Alright, um, the next one is the Sweetwater County COVID response, COVID nineteen response. Uh, the amount in there is a hundred and twenty-four thousand seventy-two dollars, uh, that is down seventeen point two-nine percent. A decrease of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight. I put that number in there, it's just what was remaining, um, when I did this, it should go down more by the end of the fiscal year. Um, but I did put that number in there based on what had been spent so far and what was remaining.
Yeah, and it'll just roll over into next year, next fiscal budget, and there shouldn't be any reason to add anymore at this point in time as we move down, so I just leave it.
Okay.
That fifty thousand, remainder of that fifty thousand between the two cities and the county for COVID.
Okay, so that's the total of the outside agencies, and the next page is, uh, just the other funds. Um, or other, so the first one is, so just, just to, um, let you know, the grant, grants come out of the general fund, um, but the rest of these do not come out of the general fund, they have their own revenues. Um, so if you decrease these, it's not going to help the, um, that shortfall at all. Unless you're decreasing the grants, but if you're decreasing grants, you're potentially decreasing grant revenue as well. So, just to make that clear. Um, so the grants, the request is four million twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. That's an increase of eleven point eight-two percent, total dollar increase is four hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
Do we know, do we know why the, why it increases?
Um, it's based on the grants that we have already. Um, so it's just based on, based on the grant agreements that, that are already in place. So it, it goes up and down year to year, just based on what grants, um, have already been approved.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, and then the next one is County Road, the budget is four million one hundred and twenty-one thousand sixty dollars. It's a three point one-three percent increase, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is Impact Tax, uh, the amount of the request is eight hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety cents, it's a decrease of forty-six thousand twenty, or sorry, forty-six point two-zero percent. Dollar amount decrease, seven hundred and four thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Um, In May Enterprise, uh, same as last year, ninety thousand, Drug Seizures, same as you, last year, fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Parks and Recreation, uh, the request is three hundred and three thousand dollars. It's an increase of two hundred and four point zero-six percent. Uh, it's an increased dollar amount of two hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So this, just to, just to let you know what this is, um, this is somewhat new, it was created last year. What happened was is we, um, the Parks and Rec used to be, um, the rec board, it were a component unit, uh, they became a county department. So the funding that they had, which was, well, the cash that they had on hand, uh, because they had to carry at least um, five months of cash in order to, to meet their cash needs. Um, they had over five hundred thousand dollars in their bank account. So what happened when they combined with the county, they became a county department. But then the, the cash that they had went into this separate fund in the system, but it's, it's not a separate fund, um, for the financial statements, but it is a separate fund within the system, just to be able to track uh, the money that was in there, because it was designated for, um, the rec board. That, that tax money was designated for the rec board, so now there is this, and there's not going to be any revenue going in here ever again, once it's gone, it's gone. Um, so that's just a little history on what, what this new item is. So, the request is three hundred and three thousand. Are there any questions on that?
The only question I'd have is if it could ever be turned over into the general fund.
Well, the reason it was put into here, so, so for financial reporting purposes, it is part of the general fund.
Okay.
Um, it was put into this separate fund in the system, just so they could track it and have it pay for Parks and Rec, because that is initially what it was designated for when the mill levy was split.
Alright, very good, thank you.
So. So the request is three hundred and three thousand, I know it was over five hundred thousand that they had in there. Um, so I imagine they'll have about two hundred thousand left after they spend this. And once they spend it, it'll go away.
Alright.
Um, the road fund, uh, the request is two million four hundred and five thousand, it's a decrease of forty-eight point fifteen percent. A decrease of two million two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Uh, the CDC Building Fund, uh, the request is sixty thousand, uh, same as last year. And then the Health Insurance Fund, the request is nine million six hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. That is a seven point eight-nine percent increase, seven hundred and four thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Very good, thank you.
Oh, that is all of the information I have for you. I would like to run through these just real quick, just to make sure I got whether we're meeting with these people, yes or no. Um, correct? So if we could do that really quickly, um, so I'll just start with the departments, Commissioners, no, Engineering, no, well, you are going to meet with Gene, but Engineering, no, Facilities Custodial, no, Facilities Maintenance, yes. Facilities Parks and Rec, yes, um, Fire Marshal, yes, Fleet Vehicle Maintenance, yes. Uh, General County Admin, no, uh, Grants Admin, no, Human Resources, yes, Risk Man- Management, no. Employee Benefits, no, I T, yes, Juvenile Probation, yes. Land Use, yes, Purchasing, yes, Road and Bridge, yes, Veteran Services, no, Assessor, no, Attorney, no. County Clerk, no, Financial Management, no. County Clerk, no, Financial Management, no, Commissioner Support, no. Elections, no, Clerk of District Court, no, Coroner, no, Sheriff, yes, Detention, yes. Emergency Management, yes, Animal Control, no. Treasure, no. Are we all on the same page with that? Any changes? Okay, Event Complex, yes, Library, yes, Museum, yes, Office Counseling, yes. Hospital Maintenance, no, and Board of Health, no.
Correct.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Alright, and, and the outside agencies, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, yes. Boys and Girls Club, yes, Castle Rock Hospital District, yes. Climb Wyoming, no. Uh, Family Resources, yes. Food Bank, yes, Hospice, yes, the IRS, no. Youth Home, yes, YWCA, yes. Golden Hour is no, Young at Heart, yes. Conservation District, no. Uh, Co-op Extension, no. Eden Valley Improvement District, yes. Flaming Gorge Days, yes, Red Desert Roundup Rodeo, yes, STAR, yes. Treatment Court, yes. Um, no's until we get down to the Airport is a yes. And then the rest are no's.
Okay.
Are we all good with that?
We're all good with it, so.
Okay.
Remind me next steps.
Okay, so at the next two budget workshops, you will be meeting with these, in the past, we've done it in one, but, but the commission had requested that we break it into two this time, so at the next two budget workshops, you'll be meeting with the individuals you decided to meet with. Um, is there a certain length of time you want me to schedule for each one? I believe I've done either ten or fifteen minutes in the past. Um, or do you want me just to use my own judgment and decide, or what would be your request?
Roy or Jeff, it's up to you to.
I have Bonnie's judgment.
Okay.
Yep.
It'll, I'm guessing ten, ten to fifteen minutes, we'll probably combine Gene's, because Gene has several, and maybe make his twenty minutes or so, but have them all within there.
You know.
That's kind of what I was thinking, but if, if you want more time, less time, it's your call.
Bonnie, I would say go with your judgment, but tell everyone to be there fifteen to twenty minutes early, that way if we're ahead, and.
Okay, and will we be doing this in, I know I was listening to the meeting earlier today, will we be doing this in the Commissioner Chambers? Or will be, we be doing this on Zoom?
Probably.
Or undecided?
Our, our hopes are that we'll be back in the meeting room for our next meeting, but at the same token, people coming early may have to, we may have to find them seats six feet apart outside of the chambers, even though, uh, we'll have to do some stuff in the chambers pending, and what the orders are.
Okay.
Alright, that's my thought, what is your thoughts, Jeff and Roy? Okay.
And then do you want it to start just at a certain time, or do you want to wait until the, um, agenda for the Commissioner meeting is set, and then just have the appointments right, starting right after that, would you like a break, how would you like me to schedule these?
Jeff and Roy, you decide. Jeff, what's your thoughts? Go right from the meeting.
I think we try to get through as many as we can, but we'll, we'll probably need some breaks in there.
Yeah, small breaks, lunch break.
Do you want a lunch break, or do you want me just to start right after the normal meeting? Or start right after the normal meeting and then have a lunch break, I'm not sure how long it's gonna go, in the, in the past, we just started at one-thirty, and we've got the meeting if it needed to be short, but if you want, um, I can just wait till the agenda's out. But if you do, I would assume you'd want at least a short lunch break.
We've never had one before, like today.
Okay, we don't need one then, we can just go straight through. Okay, I'll just talk to Sally and find out, after, I'll, I'll let the ones know that you're gonna meet with, that you're gonna meet with them that day, but I'll wait to get the times to them until I know what time the meeting's gonna be over, and then I can schedule the exact times.
Yeah, if we, if we, if we get the meeting done quick enough, the regular meeting, uh, if anybody needs to run and get a burger or something, they can, then we'll get going.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good, I will do that, are there any other questions?
Commissioners?
No.
Being no questions in this workshop being completed, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
We got a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Alright, with that, mo- meeting's adjourned, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bonnie, good work.